Back and see if you guys.
Yeah, I will. I also think if we talk to Joe Beeson, he he does have uh volunteers over the summer. He has one working for the Global Alumni Association right now. So he does always have like. He's like, if you ever have a community project that he can help with, let him know. So I could re- I'll talk to Joe first and then I'll talk to Beeson.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That one we're just gonna get a plan for. I only have six fifty-nine.
But anyone here right now?
Do I have to wait till seven?
Four seconds.
Technically.
Probably should.
Alright, go ahead.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I will call the local city council meeting to order if everybody would stand inside the pledge allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So you can go ahead with the roll call, please. Kates?
Here.
Smithers?
Here.
Lines?
Here.
Winquist absent and human absent and.
Dorian absent. Yeah, I was like, what have you done so before? Then I looked over. Uh, next thing is consent agenda. That item is just approving the agenda, the abstract of claims and the minutes from the July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Meeting, is there a motion to approve? I have to ask a question. Can I ma- I cannot make a motion tonight, right? I can vote, but I cannot make a motion. Is that correct?
We'll just.
You can.
I can vote. I know I can vote, but the other motions are gonna be the two of you.
Yeah.
So moved. Second, Kates.
There's not any discussion? We can take a vote?
Sanders?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
Line?
Yes.
Number four on the agenda is allowing visitors to address council. Um, you have three minutes to speak if there's anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda elsewhere to come up. See none, we will move on. No committee reports tonight. So Jen, for the homecoming events, you're up.
Yes. So first, I signed in a special events application for the street dance. There is enlarged previous years. Kind of the only thing that we're looking at is insurance, event insurance for the event. Trea gets the liquor license, so they have insurance, but we're also reaching out to see if we need to get something just for ourselves. I am having a hard time getting ahold of answers, but I'm gonna make a couple more calls tomorrow. So that's kind of the only thing. We've never done it previously.
Was your back, did something spark that?
The homecoming parade sparked it because I'm also on the homecoming parade committee and they apparently always get event insurance. So that's kind of where it all started.
To keep those that are involved with it, the liability off each of?
I guess so. Um, I actually, I just know I was talking about it because they get it through their liquor license. And so we thought that we were kind of covered through that. We've never, we haven't done it in seven years on insurance, but. I don't know. I'm gonna make some calls and just see what I can find out.
Yeah.
Okay, but the um. Yeah, so that's kind of the only difference. Everything else, uh, closing off first street between Vine and Walnut. We'll have a stage with the band. Uh, right now we have two food trucks confirmed. There's a third one that's, um, I still need to make a call to. But yeah, um, closing the street at three and then have, we'll have it ring opened in my line at the very latest. Usually we're way ahead of that, but. And then all we'll really need is barricades that we've done in the past, um, just on the corners and we move them. And then, um. The other thing was, oh, two officers. We just had officers at the end of the night. They, I think, hang out throughout the night. But at the end of the night, they have been instrumental in helping us kind of get everyone gone so we can open the street back up, so.
Yeah, we'll provide a, I think, we usually do it from what's the event hours?
Um, the event, so doors open at seven, music starts at eight, and it ends at eleven.
Cause I think we usually do six to.
Yeah, yeah, so. Everything we've done in the past is perfect. We're just gonna do it all over again.
So much easier now.
Those first couple of years were, it was not great, but and then COVID, oh my gosh. We lived through it and we're good now, so.
Anybody else have questions? If no other questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the event application for the homecoming street dance.
Second.
Smithers?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
And thank you because last year I was telling these guys before, we raised over seven thousand dollars that night to help into our scholarship fund, so this is a huge thing for us. Um, the other thing I came to talk about is just the homecoming parade in general, so I've joined that committee as well. I was told that the previous Karen and Larry Lincoln always just came to city council and kind of gave an update. So, uh, we had a city meeting, um, two, last week, two weeks ago sometime, um, with, um. Jamie was there, Eric Johansson was there, the school was there, a lot of people from the school were there. Mayor Winquist was there and we just kind of went over, uh, it's a new committee this year. And, uh, we're gonna keep a lot of the stuff the same as far as the lineup and we're gonna try to get the lineup just a little more organized. I, as someone who walked around with these as a nephew's, their floats were never where they were supposed to be, so we're gonna try to get a little, that a little more organized. But the route around the square will be the same, drop-off locations will be the same. We are allowing candy again. And that was, that's a big.
That's a big one.
A big one.
I was really excited about that.
Yes, so we are, we are allowing candy. Gonna get the lineup cleaned up a little bit, allow candy. We are also inviting other schools bands back. And we are, commercial floats are actually going to be charged twenty dollars to be in the parade. And then that money will go towards a prize fund because we want to bring prizes back, so. That was, is there anything else for the parade?
No, I saw the notes on it. It's very.
Yes, and. The parade is like a mini RagBri. I. It's way more work than I thought it would be.
Thanks. Um, next up we have the Super Bloom gravel. We're, we supposed to call her again? Oh, you're here! Come on up! I apologize. I had only heard your voice, so I didn't recognize you.
Yeah, I was just a stranger. Uh, I've talked to most of you already, so it's nice to actually see faces that everybody have talked to. But yeah, I know the last time when I was, uh, we were doing the application approval, there were a couple people that I found that I needed to get ahold of. So I had. A list of now eighteen individuals that I've spoken to got approvals from, uh, all ranging from, uh. TNR, uh, DRC. The C park, uh, Mills County, various departments, police chief, bar chief and everybody, so I have all of that approvals all good to go. I think one of the biggest questions that I had too is just like on the parking issue. Cause we have, obviously we're accrual to use Mills County Historical Society museum area and also the Davies and Theater, so we got approval there. And they told us that we could use the lot that's shared by the museum in the park. Um, I think I just heard from Steve Hunt that maybe that's not allowed. So we have the grass spots, the, the park and where they used to have the car show, I believe, offered up too. And then school, the high school is allowing us to use their parking lots as well as the middle school, we're in overflow, so in between all of those, we should.
Yeah, the highs, I think the high school just for trailers is gonna be easier for you to maneuver.
Yeah, and so like we just, it's mostly just people, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, we have people coming in from like twelve, twelve different states now. And most of them are flying in or driving in. Uh, most of them are from the Iowa and Nebraska area, so it'll just be just like cars with their bike racks and nothing.
Okay.
Too complicated and they'll just be coming and going depending on when you finish, if you wanna stick around. Um, I believe that was the only thing that I was supposed to check on. Uh, was there anything else that?
Okay.
I know, but the parking, we were, no.
And she spoke to Ron and Ron was, gave her all the tips on who to talk to and where to park.
Every person I talked to me was the five other people and it just kept, it was just kept growing. So I have this nice spreadsheet of all the notes, the numbers and.
I'm sorry that that was so difficult and we need to figure something else to streamline that.
We've got a lot of groups that have places in the park.
Well, this is actually easy because now that I have this, now I can just look for next year, I can just email all these people on once and I'm like, now I know. I most, it was just, I would go to Ohio.
You're right.
Who owns, well, I was under the impression that Mills County Museum owned the most of that property and they didn't want to share the park and different entities in the park, so.
Yeah.
I learned a lot.
I appreciate your patience.
It's been fun, we're learning a lot, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
I can't pull this up on the tablet or my phone. When is this happening?
Oh, yeah, uh, it's September sixth.
Okay.
Saturday, September sixth. And then, um, the other individual that I was in contact with was in the secondary roads. And I think they were just gonna keep me updated when we went to the event, closures or anything, or fresh gravel being poured on some roads or something.
Right.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, September sixth. Uh, it starts, the race, the first starts at seven thirty, the second one goes off at like eight fifteen, eight thirty. We should be wrapped up and gone by two P M, with what we did last year, two to three P M time limit. I did have one question real quick. Uh, so because we're gonna exit out of the amphitheater that rode, I forget the name of it, and turn left onto Lake, the Lake Drive. Um, I was just wondering if there was a way that I could maybe, cause it's a blind corner and we're coming downhill, if there's any way that. It could maybe have like maybe just traffic stop for just while they're exiting, so nobody turns into like a vehicle. So they come down an amphitheater road and then they turn left on the Lake Drive. And so I know there's like kind of like that gate.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if that was like, that's something that would allow us to even have like volunteers there that kind of like stop traffic to make sure that. Just car stop for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you've got volunteers.
Yeah.
That would probably be the best. I don't know if we have any type of. Anything that we could set out.
Close the gate.
We're going out the gate, so.
But, but you're going out on Ives, so you're going like rain to Ives, straight to the ground.
So we're going Davies Amphitheater Road and then turning left onto Lake Drive and then going through, uh, like the.
Yeah.
So you could, you could close the gate up by the lake, like coming in. And then if you just barricaded part of it, coming out just for the time that you go for exiting.
It'll maybe take them like five minutes to exit, so it won't be anything crazy. I just, that's one thing that I thought when I drove in, I'm like, oh, and they turned left.
Oh, we, I was trying to picture it in my head.
Yeah, the gate that they closed the door.
The gate would be, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think so.
I think that's all I have.
So the whole street is one of those, partial barricades is. Bit of activity. At the end, what like going on? Cause you guys go on the GRC, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's just that little area, like everyone understands.
And there's like twenty minute window.
Yeah.
Roughly?
Yeah, it's not long at all. And I can send you the map too, like where exactly we're in, like where I personally.
Mitch, I apologize if this wrong. Can you communicate that with Ron to have him close that gate or is that something I need to call him to do? And coordinate with? For that twenty minute window?
I'm happy to do it as well.
I can.
I guess I don't know how that.
I don't know what gate.
Trying to look at your.
So as you come down the drive right in front of the lake, there's a gate there. They could close it in the winter.
Big rock?
Just beyond the camp road.
Yeah. Or we could use temporary barricades down there too around it. I know the people.
Close the gate down when the bikes get.
They're coming.
They'll be on the other.
So we can down here and then we turn left. Yeah, and this is the. The area of, yeah, so we can.
Hey, what, what we'll do is, uh, we'll get free of the little temporary roadblock things from you guys Friday night. We'll have our guys put them up. What time is it again?
Uh, the first race goes up at seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Next one at eight fifteen, eight thirty, trying to figure out the final timing on that.
We'll have a block up so we can grab people to get off. We'll get those.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Hamster.
That's a six, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So should be.
Anything else? If not, which one of you would like to make a motion on this? Whose turn is it?
So moved. Line? Kates, second.
Kates?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, these meetings are riveting. You might wanna stay, but. Thank you. Thanks for coming to our area. You're up, Jake.
All right, a couple things tonight, nothing too mind-blowing. Um, the first one is the Sharp Street inning. Um, they've got all the mainline digging done, they got the eighty caps, the ramps done. They have to come back, they have to stripe, which is supposed to be scheduled for this week and I have a final.
Let me talk to you about that.
Okay.
We're out doing it right now.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do it and they can fix that up.
All right, it's, so based on what we had, we had a, there's about thirty-two hundred dollars worth of. So if we wanna tell them no, we'll tell them no and just let you guys do it.
We're out doing it now.
That's completely up to you guys, so. Okay.
That's why I think the guys, stop calling them today.
Okay. I will call Lakeview in the morning and just say, hold on, and we'll just deduct it from the pool.
Sorry.
Okay.
I can do that.
So you make a note on that quick. So yes, they got the mainline digging done, they had to come back. We just pulled out the striping, um, but they had to backfill, they had to see, they had to, you know, clean down. Um, so they should be back here any day. They were kind of waiting to stripe before they came back, so. Um, I don't remember what I gave you, what I did, I gave you guys last time, it would be full of that brick and asphalt out, there was actually like a solid or. Concrete rock base underneath it, so it went back really nice, really nicely compacted, so I was very happy with it. Um, well, we haven't got a final walkthrough yet, but we'll be back here probably next week. Um, I was waiting till they get all the, the final cleanup stuff done. Um, the goal would be to close it out at the next meeting. If not, it'll, it'll roll into September, so. The big thing was getting it done, of course, for the start of the cleanup stuff, it will not impact, uh, the everyday travel, so. And we do have an application for payment from Lakeview. Um, this is the first payment. Uh, this brings us up to what's been done, less the retainage. Um, that amount is a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred, thirty, forty-five. Um, after review of the quantities that we kept track of and our review, we do recommend payment of that amount, so.
So moved. Kates, second. Line?
Are you clear? You're, you're voting on the Sharp Street beating right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Smithers?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
All right. The next one is the asphalt project. Um, as you have saw, been entered asphalt, we've done a prep work. There is still like time inspection to do. Um, I talked to Omni or I used Old Castle. We told them we'd have a punch list here within a couple weeks. Um, so we'll do that next week at my office, Jamie, whoever else wants to come along. Take pictures, document everything. I thought I went very smooth, I've had a couple hiccups with some of the dead end that we talked about last time, so. Um, old castle materials, Omni Engineering has submitted a pay app. Um, this is up to approximately ninety-five percent. We do have a couple of ads that will change order in, um, a couple extra areas we added. We knew about or we just, they're not included with this yet because we're up near the contract price range. So the amount for this application is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred, thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. And then just holding back the retainage as always. So once we get those final quantities agreed to, we'll have a change order and a final payout in the future meeting, so. After review of the work and the quantities, we do recommend payment in that amount.
So moved. Lines? Kates, second.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
All right, the Locust Street manholes, those that have been replaced, they are a lot smoother than they were. I, Nick was down here with a fine true comb, making sure everything was exact. Um, we did end up buying a new ring and cover for the one manhole. Uh, we just took care of that as part of what we do down here, so hopefully that's good. The next step on Locust Street is Jamie and I are working on the crack ceiling. If I can act it, find some wording somewhere that we get the contract, come back and do it. Um, I've offered us of our fee to help cover some of it, just as a goodwill to get this project done and acceptable, so. Still working on it. I don't have the answer yet, Donnie, but it is on my list.
I just, I just think it'd be something that would help stretch the line.
And we've had those conversations.
Yeah.
Um, we had my guys down this week measuring how much so we get a quote.
Yeah.
Kind of go from there, so that is in process as well. Hopefully that'll be taken here, uh, be done this fall.
All right, appreciate it.
Any other questions on Locusts? Yeah, the other one, uh, the pool assessment. Um, I don't know if it was on the claim sheet this time, but Reebok did bill for what they thought was their final stuff. Um, as part of that, they pulled out some costs for not putting the holes back in the bottom of the pool. Um, Mitch and I talked, we think it's probably gonna just keep the pool sealed back up, but not knowing what's going to happen in the future. Um, so the, I believe it was forty-one hundred dollars that they had removed from their contract, not from the contract, but they had not billed for. Um, I just wanted to make sure it was good with you guys to go ahead and have them do that. Um, it wouldn't be an add or anything, it would just be finishing up their contract. It's been approved previously, but since we mentioned that, we just wanted to make sure everything's covered and in the minutes that you guys know what's going on.
Yeah, so they're just gonna send us a bill, right? We don't, we're not approving the actual payment of it yet.
Yeah.
It's just, you know.
So we'll get them back down here, get that filled in.
Yeah.
That way there's no hole over the wind or something like that. I think that's the best route, not knowing, kind of the unknowns of the future as well, so.
Right.
So I'm not really gonna make a motion or anything, just more updated, but, um, there's progress there. Once I have a schedule, I'll pass it on.
Yeah.
Anything else from you on here?
Yes, I wanted to tell you, um. I don't know who the gentleman was that was notifying neighbors in the area of Louise and East Florence.
Okay.
He was extremely professional, extremely polite, letting, I mean, I don't know how many he went to, but.
I gave him a stack of a hundred and I think he went through all of them, so, uh, I will pass that on. Nick is, he started with us in April. He was kind of taking over for Jeff Frye. Um, he has been a wonderful employee and is gonna be down here quite a bit, so.
So super professional, communication was clear, answered questions, like kudos to.
I appreciate that.
You, your team and to him.
I will pass that on to him as well, so.
Thank you.
He'll be your guy to just kind of field up down here going forward, um, kind of the Iowa side for me. So you'll see a lot of them as we move forward and. Um, feel free to stop and give him a hard time. He's a, he's a great.
He was great. And I, and I did tell him that day, I did one of the, as he was walking away, I did that debate of, do I say something or not? As in, I, I just wanna let you know I'm on city count, not, and I was like, not that that means anything, but I want you to know that I will take this back. Because we always wonder, how does that notification process work? What's the interaction like? And he, he was fantastic.
I appreciate that and I will pass that on. Usually we just hear the backend of the bad stuff, so I will make sure that gets passed on.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to departmental reports. Do we have anything? On the library at all? Any update on? Mike Collins, anything from him?
He's been in and out a lot with his father and mom. Going through some, yeah, companies bothering us and. Medical issues, so he's been taking time off.
Anything from the park? We are flying through things.
Uh, well, we're going to, Ron and I are going to be meeting with the baseball club, uh, later this week for their. Walkthrough that we've added to, you know, the annual processes, so.
Is that to discuss how often we're going and to finalize that? Cause didn't we?
Yeah, we said we'd finalize that, but we're doing the walkthrough portion at a time where they go through all the fields and stuff with them.
Jane?
Have some extra equipment down there that we have to replace, hope we never get anything with it. I just wanted to talk to you guys about, if you care, if I went down, talked to Al Hughes and put it on auction time down there. I think you'll get more out of it than you do.
With the sealed bids?
Sealed bids. Um, one's a ninety-six Phantom Axel dump truck. It's been replaced with a newer one. Um, the other one is a two thousand and three Chevy twenty-five hundred with service body. Which we replaced that one. Only put the service body on to twenty-fifteen. So we're not using that O three anymore. And then the other thing would be the regular pickup box Alpha that, twenty-fifteen pickup.
Is that something that we can do, is put them out of auction like that, or does it have to go, you know, against the city?
I don't think we have to.
Okay. I, I, this is the first time I've heard of, of anything like this, so.
I know the counties have some stuff down there.
Okay.
Off the water department guys, when they get new pickups, they pick them down there and they say they actually.
Cause we can set a minimum on it, right?
Yeah. I just wanted to talk to Al to see what he gives for a commission and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything for advertising.
I thought we did send some stuff down there to him before, but maybe he just put it online? Was it an amb, what'd we do, Matt? Do you remember? I'm looking at you like, was it an ambulance related? I thought we did some, police?
You guys put some, uh, some of your cars down there.
Yeah, I'm like, I know we've done this.
I know we've done sealed bids for.
We did seal bids and they didn't come back.
Yeah, they did something with.
And so we ended up going with Alec Hughes. I don't remember, Suburbans maybe?
They did some of the. The car that they, well, they had, I believe. Not for sure, but I know it was Eric that did something with Alec Hughes.
Yeah, that would be more sense than your ambulance.
I remember it was you guys went down there.
I don't, I mean. I don't think it's anything we need to take, I think if you just talk to Al and find out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't. Okay.
And the other thing I had on here was our salt and sand storage. As the asphalt was all broke up and it settled. So when it rained or snowmelted, it all really did our salt and sand pile. We were wanting to build that back up and reasphalt it. Cause we're getting chunks of asphalt in our sanders and then they just stopped.
Yeah.
And get it digged out. I have ten thousand dollars in there for ground maintenance in my line item. And that was Matt Bruce today. He come down and said it was gonna be around thirteen thousand. So I was wondering to make up the extra. Either take this money from this stuff we're in sale or I do that money that I brought in from the. Asphalt grindings and them con- concrete grindings that I sold. I don't remember how much that was. I'm thinking, I know it was over five thousand dollars.
Can we get more bids? I mean, I know, I know Matt's.
Problem is coming in and doing this, there's not many guys.
They're gonna do it?
No, no. That's why we hire Matt to do all of our little patchwork. That's why we hire Matt to do all of our little patchwork. I think Matt's gonna be your most reasonable.
Well, isn't there another company that's posted locally? That's the only thing I'm. I don't remember who it was, but I thought I saw some asphalt, somebody else doing asphalt in the area. If I got their name, maybe if we reached out and had them at least price it, I'd feel better than just. Although, I mean, I get it, Matt does all our stuff, he does a good job, like I don't take anything away from that. But if we can keep it at that, if we can find somebody that will do it for what they already have. Let me look and see if I can find the name of that company. And then I guess Mitch, can you look into the rest of like, how, if, if we can't get it under ten? What those other amounts are that would be available to help pay that difference? Please? Is that alright, Jamie?
Sorry, I'm making notes.
Anything else, Jamie?
Did have somebody stop in my office today. Want to know if he wants to sell any of them bricks from Kuvich Street. I told him I would bring it up to you, you can decide nothing tonight. I just bring it to your attention, Matt.
So this is gonna be crazy. Were you on yet?
That's another brick.
I don't remember. Shortly after I got on city council, we had a whole thing and we had to vote on the price that we would sell bricks for. So if we've already decided on it, right, I don't.
I don't recall.
Look at Mitch's face, he's like, wait, what?
I know I stole some before.
We did, and we had, we came up with a price.
Ten, twelve years ago, probably.
Um, we came up with a price on what we were gonna sell the bricks for. Um, I can tell you that Craig Florian would have still been on the council. It was all happening this, kind of in tandem with the whole.
I remember that, just so you know.
Okay, so I'm not crazy.
But it was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago.
It was when you guys were talking about, like, the brick, the brick, when you were redoing the brick, the.
Yeah.
Roads.
So if, I don't, I don't know how you go back and look, but there should be notes somewhere of the agreed upon price.
Well, if it's ten years ago, I mean, that's inflation.
This is true.
If you're on ten years older.
It wasn't much.
For some reason I want to say it was like an older correct.
That was exactly what I read on there.
I was, I had it in that area myself, so we can't all be crazy. But I don't know if you can find it, I don't know if we have to re-improve it, like I don't. Mitch's face is cracking me up, he's like, wait, what? Brick streets are a thing. So I guess, can you guys try and look, see, and then I, yeah, I guess if we have to put it back on to vote on what the price should be, then. I know we, I know we did it at one point. Anything else, Jamie?
Oh, I got.
We'll end on the brick streets. You're up, Dirk. Yeah?
Kurt.
Kurt, what did I say? Kurt, you're up.
Uh, start by reporting that, uh, on August sixth, we have the Cultivate Community event. As many of you know, unfortunately, a tragedy unfolded around seven-thirty that evening. And it's been around Grove Street, unfortunately, people lost their life. Our condolences go out to the family. We're grateful for the assistance provided for, from the Milton County Sheriff's Office, the Iowa State Patrol, D C I, along with the other agencies, Fire and Rescue and E M S. That's, there's a press release on that event if anybody wants to acquire on the D P S website. Also seeking approval, uh, our A C went down, I think Chief talked to Mitch about this. Uh, we do have two quotes from Prussia and Suns Heating and Air. Uh, one for a whole replacement in a total of seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And one for just the repairs of the down item, that's at two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. So I just need approval for one of those.
How old is the unit? I don't know if anyone's gonna know this, the one, if you were to repair it.
Yeah.
How old is that unit?
How much money would be thrown at it?
I don't know to the answer to that. Um, as far as I know, when it was redone, what was that, probably thirteen or fourteen, thirteen years ago when we moved into that building?
That's pretty old.
So.
Didn't we repair something with it last, last year or two years ago? I mean, I feel like we've thrown money at this once.
We had the grinder pump last year.
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
I don't remember an A C issue at the P D.
Okay, that may, that could be.
I think it'll weigh in, see if they have one A C issue.
Yes, could do.
I just wondered if it would be, be better off just to replace it? If you throw almost three thousand dollars onto it now and six months down the road, next spring, you gotta throw another six thousand into it, or three thousand, then you're almost a cost of a new one.
Yeah.
Think they had, put sticks in my head, maybe around nine pounds of freon in it.
He did, Eric did say something about that on the phone to me, yeah.
Yeah.
To keep it going for now.
Was this?
Money there, Mitch?
Just fix it, I, I think.
Replace the whole thing?
Replacing the whole thing is something that we could do.
Is it budgeted anywhere, or?
Probably do a budget amendment with, uh, fund balance to, uh, pay for it, but I think it would be a good use of it. And it goes into something too where we should probably, um, put together a, uh, facility, uh, replacement needs, so we can plan out into the future, the needs in the facility. Cause there's another thing that I've got on my, underneath to bring to you too about the, this aging infrastructure in the facility, but.
No, that's a great idea.
But I do think, it's something that we can do. We, we finished the last fiscal year at like twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, last month.
To the good. So we, we have some fund balance that we could use for something important like this, like A C and the police department, so.
Do you don't need more estimates on this? Than just the one?
That's probably a good point, cause I was thinking too, but it's the same company.
Did it go out too, and, I mean, did other people, I believe Chief Johansson reached out to a couple of other companies and just with the time crunch, we didn't have enough time for those contractors to come out.
Yeah, I started a bad situation to, it happened, you know, the day he was dealing with all the.
Other.
Yeah, I believe it was a setup that this.
Like the next day.
So, yeah. Do you want me to reach out this week for additional bids?
I don't want you guys without air, which I know that's not what you asked.
Is it keeping up? Is it working, or is it just gone?
It's, I mean, it's a little bit warmer than normal. Um, when, obviously they filled it with freon and it's eventually gonna leak out.
Leaking back out.
I think it's something we could do, um, if you want us to look for more bids, we can. It's sort of a emergence, well, you know, a short timeframe to get it on, on council meeting, get it approved and everything, and.
Well, and I'm looking at, now it may have changed from when I looked at it earlier today, but it's supposed to get stupid hot again this weekend, right?
This week.
So that thing's gonna be working over, like I don't, as much as this isn't an ideal situation, everything in me says we make an exception and.
Yeah.
Move forward with getting one bid. Do you guys feel differently?
Okay, I mean, they've done work for us in the past. You know, they're local, we know them. I'd be fine with accepting that bid and moving forward.
But they want.
In this, in this situation.
For the, for the new unit?
Yeah. So I'll make the motion for the, uh, A C unit replacement.
One second.
Uh, Kate's?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Did they say when we can start?
I'll probably give them a call tomorrow and see, I'm sure they'll up the order for the unit.
Um, real, real quick before we go on to the next thing, Kurt, cause I screwed up before. Um, and I know it's been said, but I, I think everybody here wants to thank you guys for all that you did that night too. And I want to make sure that that's very well known from the city council's point. I'll speak to the mayor, I know she put out a statement, but. And Matt, you're, I mean, just the way you guys all look together with all of the other departments, all of the other agencies that shows up, showed up. You guys are the stars of the community and thank you for everything you did. It's, it's appreciated. I know everybody in the community feels that way, so thank you.
Yeah, it wouldn't have been possible without all the other agencies working together.
Yeah.
The department on our side of some event like that is very difficult to deal with and because of Cultivate Community, we had a lot of law enforcement around and that made it more efficient.
Yeah, well, thank you both.
Uh, the only other thing I have is the pump in the front restroom that was approved, if that's gonna be in and replaced tomorrow for the sewer. And we did have, uh, our testing, um, unfortunately, we had seventeen applicants, uh, five showed up. And, uh, we did, we sent two of those five to pass the physical. And, uh, nobody passed the written, so we are gonna resubmit the written, uh, for those individuals, pass the physical and then hold another testing for the individuals failed the physical. So, but that's all I have.
Thank you. Matt?
Um, first up on the agenda, I have, uh, resignation acceptance for firefighter M T Kaylee Wyland. Um, she's going to be stay-at-home now, mom now, so. She's resigned her, uh, position effective by August twenty-sixth. Um, so I have that on there for acceptance, for resignation.
How long has she been with us, Matt?
Kaylee's been on the department about total, um, she's on volunteer side, close to, I believe, nine years, I think, total.
That's nice. I mean, good for her in this case. I'm glad we're not lo- losing her to a nearby city. We've just spent time with the kiddos. They're a motion to accept her resignation.
So move Kate's.
Second, lines?
Kate's?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
And then, uh, second is to approve the posting for her position to be posted.
So move Kate's.
Second, lines?
Lines?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Since last council meeting, uh, we've had fifty-five calls for service. And that is it to all that.
You're up, Mitch. Thanks, Matt.
Um, we've got, um, an issue with the Wi-Fi access points in the building where they don't work. Um, you try to connect your phone, it will connect, um, and they don't connect very well for, um, laptops. They don't connect at all anymore over the G M U side. Um, they are, I think, twelve years old, they're past their useful life, every, uh, contract they're right had come in. Uh, said, well, they usually last eight, eight years. We pushed it past that. Um, these are just those Wi-Fi access points around the building. Um, and then, so I got three different bids from three different local, uh, companies. And can you see them in your packet at all? I can. From, um, Western Iowa Networks and their, um, affiliate company that does, uh, I T services. Aegis, who currently does our, um, I T R, computer monitoring and, um, Heartland, uh, I don't know, Heartland Business Systems. And so the difficulty with this was they sort of all had different but similar solutions. So the Heartland, uh, Business Systems, their solution, their bid was seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. And, um, it was for, uh, the Ethernet switch and then the five wireless access points and then monthly licenses for monitoring those. That was the most expensive bid, but it was, from my understanding, the, uh, uh, the highest quality equipment. Aegis, who is probably the most familiar with our, uh, setup, because they do our computer monitoring and, uh, I T questions with our computers and everything. Their bid was six thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. And they had a few different things in here. I, I liked their, uh, I could understand their quote the best because they sort of explained why they put every component in that bid and they were back there looking at, well, all of them were back there looking at, you know, their back closet, the, uh, the situation back there. But theirs upgrades the most components, the most, uh, twelve-year-old components. So we get new firewall and new switch and new access points and new cable and things like that. All things that are old, have to be used for twelve years. And he's, and they're familiar with our setup already, having provided our I T services. Then, uh, Western Iowa Networks, they, um, theirs was for five thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, theirs includes access points and the switches. Um, that's it, no upgrading of any of the other, um, components that some of the other contractors thought suggested we also upgrade. Then they did include, uh, two different laptops to upgrade, cause those are other needs that, that we need to, uh, address eventually. So they're all sort of slightly different bids, um, as you can get when you do these I T things, cause there's a thousand different. Any one problem, um. But really to fix our, uh, Wi-Fi and upgrade all of the, uh, switch and, uh, Wi-Fi hardware, um, firewall and everything. I thought, uh, we get the most from the Aegis, uh, bid. Just to prevent anything, uh, going out from our twelve-year-old equipment.
We just had that firewall issue not that long ago, it seems like, that we had to have. I'm just curious, on the laptop issues, like would, is that not something? Did Aegis not think that was something we needed to do or was something that it's?
That was a different conversation that we had, that came up with that particular. Guy, he was also. So I also got bids from some of them for providing the. I managed IT services. And so they also. Added that computer, um, thing in there. But I haven't really, didn't really ask any of the other ones for bids on computers and that sort of pricing.
And I don't know, I'm just wondering, is there any? Would there possibly be any cost savings if we said to Aegis, hey, all of this? And what does that look like if you add whatever that other need is versus doing it three months from now? Is there any type of a, yeah, hey, if you want to do all that, well.
Knock some off?
Knock some off.
I could ask them.
Because if it's a. I mean, and I'm not saying it's not a legit need, I just don't understand the need right now, but if it's something that you're going to say in. Two weeks at the next meeting, okay, let's talk about laptops, I'd rather get how and price it and see what that looks like. If that's what makes sense, if Aegis is the one which I, I am not an IT person. But based off of what you say with all the components that they were placing in those upgrades, that would make sense to me. And if they are willing to, okay. Now we can have these in and save you, I, even if it's ten percent, it's still ten percent.
Yeah, that's something that I could, we could table it and I can, I could speak to. Speak to all of them, I guess. To sort of get a more comprehensive, uh, picture, because basically the Aegis one addressed more of the. Replacing. More of the old components back there. And the Wi-Fi access points don't really work at all for newer devices, newer cell phones. Than laptops and things like that, so.
And if you don't think, like, if you're like, yeah, the laptop thing, we're going to have to talk about it, but I'm not going to bring it up in the next two weeks, I'm not going to bring it up in the next two months. Then maybe it's not worth having that conversation.
I wasn't planning to bring it up until the next, uh, budget cycle.
Well, then maybe it's not.
Something to put on the radar to, uh, budget for, um, laptop replacement.
Well, if you think it can wait that long. I just, if it was some urgent thing that you guys are fighting with every day and it's. Teresa's like, um.
Well, they haven't told me any complaints about our computers, but, uh, maybe Teresa's noticed things.
Well, and is it the computers or is it all of that situation? If that situation gets fixed, does that help? Production on the laptop?
Oh, why not? Uh, well, we have Wi-Fi back here when we're trying to. The YouTube, uh, stream and, um. Other things like that, but. Right now, we, you know, if anyone wants to use Wi-Fi, it doesn't work that well.
Is that the biggest? Your biggest concern? I'm just going by the look on your face when I was asking, like, are you just like, yeah, the Wi-Fi has to get fixed, is that the biggest problem?
I think it's a combination of, uh, the, like you said, the access points, they're not working with the, with the system. Just. Being a city office, it should really be more efficient as far as internet and.
Well, it's just twelve-year-old, all of them said, yep, this is just twelve-year-old equipment, it's.
How old are the laptops?
Well, the laptops are, are, I don't know how old the laptops are, but Aegis does send us reports on. Equipment, uh, quality and pretty much everyone on their report, they say should be replaced, except for the new one that. That Joe purchased with ARPA funds. Are all outdated. They were all, except for one, able to be updated to Windows eleven. So that was good, because Windows ten was going to be out of service. And no longer, Microsoft was not going to provide it, um, service for Windows ten anymore. And all, all but one had been able to be updated to Windows eleven, so. They're at least able to do that. Um, but it's probably something, another thing, like with the facility. Needs, we need a, we need a IT.
Uh huh.
Needs that we can slowly start replacing instead of having it all, um, waiting for it to fail. Sort of thing.
Well, and I just don't, I, I mean, I just sit here and go, yeah, I get it, money is a problem, but how much money is it costing us in the lack of productivity? I mean, if you're spending half an hour doing something that should take ten minutes. There's a cost there. So maybe the answer is, I'd love for you guys to weigh in, like, maybe we just approve. Getting the access points and the components replaced and still asking to find out what that would actually cost. To do that sooner rather than later. I don't know, what do you guys?
For the, for the laptop replacement? Well, with something that needs to be done, it's not going to hurt to look into it.
Yeah.
Uh, if. If this, just say the Aegis bid, if that's something that needs to be done, because I know we've had this discussion. Recently.
That you have.
In the la, well, I thought we did here in the last few months or something, about all the problems we were having with.
Yeah, she was having problems up here, uh, at a few different council meetings where it was.
So if that's something that needs to be addressed now. To get, you know, everything working. Like, we need to move forward with that, if, if the laptops, I mean, that's, like you said, that's something that, if it could wait till the next fiscal year. Or start checking into it now and see what it's going to cost, I don't know.
Well, I'm even wondering if you could, this sounds terrible, I'm really not shady, but if you kind of let, called them back and said, hey, along with this. What would, you know, can you give us a cost and then? Let them know, we'd like, if it's approved, that we'd like to move ahead with that. If we want that price on the computers, can I bring that back to you? Because maybe they would say, yeah, we'll give you a break on the computer price because you're doing all of this. And allow it though to, I got to take that back to council, but I just wanted to see, it's worth asking. But I, maybe we, we, I don't know about maybe, it's up to you guys making the motion. Address that immediate need now and still see if we can't get pricing on the other, see if the funds are there.
Yeah, and, um. Too, I can go back to all of the, uh. I can go back to some of the other IT companies too and say. Sort of get more comparable bids, I guess.
Right.
They're sort of. Some of them were proposing their best possible solution, but they could do a more budget-friendly solution or, you could say, you know. Some of them didn't do every component that all ties together and is old and some of them did. So there's just. They're like similar but not exact. Bids, you know, and I was learning more about the needs as I heard three different people look at it and, and talk about it.
Well, we can hold off on making a motion if you want to put together like a more cohesive. Request for a quote and then come back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I'm fine with that because I sort of just wanted to bring this to your attention and show you sort of what. I'm, the feedback I'm getting from these companies, um, the price of doing this replacement, but also. Sort of hone in more on the exact, uh, needs that need to be done and, um. I do, I do feel that, that, that Aegis does give us good service, um, from my experience with them so far, so. And I think that he understands our, our needs, uh, better than, than, than the other companies, um, but.
I think we've always heard that, that Aegis has been great to work with. Don't they work with county too?
Um, I don't think so, but they work with other. Governments.
Well, if you want to do that Mitch, like put to, and I, I mean, I know it's going to be work, but even look at some of those further down the road IT things and. Because maybe it's one of those, even when we talk about the construction projects, be able to phase it, here's phase one of our IT. Here's phase two, here's, and see if they. Can't somehow price it out to help in a big picture thing. And then we can put it on the schedule of when to do it and how to do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we have motion to table?
I was going to ask you that.
No, we're just reporting, so.
Say anything about a motion or action.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I didn't put on that motion, so, okay, that. Um, okay, the next thing was, um. Our fax line renewal, um. Is up, the last time we purchased it from, uh, Access Systems, who does our copier, um, was, we purchased fi- a five-year license. And I'd like to do that again with them. Just five years for two lines that the police department and the admin office use.
That's forty ninety-nine a month, is that what I'm looking at? Oh, but the five years, the twenty-two nineteen. Forty, that's the one we'd be paying, correct?
Yeah. Is what we did previously and, uh, I think the police department gets the most faxes, but, um.
So moved, Kates. A second line.
Uh, Smithers?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Uh, then I've got the July financial report in your pocket, uh, for you to review and if you have any questions, yeah. Feel free to let me know. I'd be happy to look into them or answer any of them. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Which will lead us into the public hearing.
Well, we have to call, uh. Tammy from Switco for this.
Okay.
Here's her item.
Do we need to wait to get her on the phone first?
We need to motion to call the public hearing.
I think we can get it.
And why am I forgetting the excuse?
This is Tammy.
Hi Tammy, this is Teresa, I'm adding with, uh, so do you have one line?
Hello.
You can get that one.
Hi Tammy, we're just putting you up here, um, we are going to go ahead and call the, uh, public meeting to order, we just wanted to get you on the phone first.
Perfect, thank you.
Um, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Kates.
Smithers?
Yes.
Kates?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
So I will open the public hearing at eight oh three.
Good evening, everyone, um, this is Tammy DeBoer from Southwest Iowa Planning Council and I am the grant administrator for the downtown revitalization. Community Development Block Grant Project. Um. Overall, the project is approximately forty-five complete of the current budget. The substantial completion date for the project is October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And to date, four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents has been spent. With two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars in CDVG construction funds expended. And twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars in administrative funds expended. There is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars remaining in construction funds. And nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars remaining in administrative funds. The city's local match to date has been two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty cents. In the form of city and owner funds. We do anticipate completing a budget amendment to increase the total budget with an increase in CDVG funds and matching funds. Needed to address the emergency issues with buildings at fourteen North Walnut and eleven North Line. Uh, so far demolition is completed on all buildings within the project. Carpentry, masonry, painting and glasswork is underway in most of the buildings, with the exception of fourteen North Walnut. And eleven North Line. Where we are awaiting instructions from the structural engineer on how best to move forward. Uh, once the reports for those two addresses have been received. We will, uh, resume work on those as well to make sure they're structurally sound. What questions do you all have for me?
Tammy, what we're, I thought. I guess, let me reword my question, I know we got one report from the structural engineer. And then it was deemed that there wasn't enough information on that report, if I'm remembering it correctly. So is, are we still waiting on that portion of the report to be completed or is there yet another report that we're waiting on?
So we're waiting on the more detailed report from the structural engineer because the architect and the contractor. Did not feel like there was enough information in the one we received to adequately. Know how to proceed in the best possible manner.
So I'm going to keep asking questions and please know that they're not directed at you, but. That was last week. Do, like, how, how are we holding this, the structural engineer to the fire on this? Like, I, I'm not understanding why it's taking them so long.
Um, that is a very good question and unfortunately I'm not able to answer that. Uh, the structural engineer is a subcontractor of Curtis Architecture and they are the ones dealing with the engineer directly.
So. And I think this has been, the question at least in my book and I think from others is. Who is the ultimate person to help us push this?
Um. I. I would say that is probably the architect, um. Now, we all have different jobs that we do, my job is to make sure that we're following HUD rules. The architect is trying to make sure that the buildings are structurally sound. As well as meeting what HUD requires for the project with keeping, um, hyster- historical integrity. So, um. Yeah, I, you know, I don't want to say there's. Any one person per se, but I do think, you know, KPE is the one we need. They're the ones we're waiting on right now.
Right, and again, I, I, I do, I understand, but I think that is where, and I don't, I don't want to speak too much, but where the frustration is. Is coming from is that it does seem like everybody's got these different jobs. But what's happening is the project is. Not going as it. not going as it should. And so my concern, and I'm only speaking for myself, is that we've taken all these steps, and we've got this CDVG going. And instead of it helping and improving our downtown square area, it's now hurting them. We have businesses closed. We have businesses that can't get people in.
And residents.
So I have, and I know, again, I understand it's not you, but I'm looking for some guidance from somewhere, from somebody, and I don't know who to get it to. Because somehow we, this needs to be the number one priority for KPE. And I don't know who that is that can push that. Is that we just need to call Curtis Architecture? Like, somebody has to step in. We're doing the absolute opposite thing to our local businesses that this funding was intended for, in my opinion.
And I agree, this is an extremely frustrating experience. And whatever we can do to facilitate speeding up the process, we absolutely will do. I cannot speak for anyone else. I'm sorry.
Can you help us get a name?
For, for KPE or?
For somebody, maybe, maybe it's higher, I don't like the way that this sounds, and it's, it's not probably gonna come out right, but higher up the chain that can get eyes on this, or is, like, who do we need to call? Is this that we need to start calling state senators? Which, maybe that's crazy, but I'm just like, this is funding coming from somewhere that somebody is managing. That somebody needs to get involved and do something because it's not working. And I'm not saying that's you. I hope you understand the position we're coming from.
No, no, I totally understand.
Instead, it's
I, I think we, what would probably need to happen is, first of all, talk to Curtis Architecture. But then we should probably also, yes, definitely, let's figure out what needs to happen, because yes, I agree, this has been going on too long.
Yeah, I mean, we've got facades of buildings and business owners and residents that are in this. And so that's, I mean, if it's, then we can take the report from KPE and find somebody else that can do it now. And for lack of a better way to say it, fire KPE, then we need to, we need to do something. Sitting still, we're going backwards.
Yeah, and I think when it became apparent we needed a structural engineer, the architect had reached out to multiple engineers. And KP was the only one to even willing to look at it at that time, if I'm remembering correctly. Now, the other engineers wanted to be involved in the project.
Sorry, I'm taking notes. That's all I have. I mean, I'm not sure there's much else we can, I can say then. I mean, I'm happy there's, I just feel like we've reached out and worked with Curtis Architecture, and that's getting nowhere.
I'm sorry. Yes, I know, this is very frustrating for everyone involved.
Did we have, I mean, I'm just sitting here now looking at the agenda, because I'm not really sure where we go with here. Did we have any written or any objections or anything filed at City Hall?
No, we did not.
Nothing written? I mean, I don't, I'll be honest, like, in a public hearing, I don't know. Can we ask for any input?
So, E, any other council members want to make any comments or?
Yeah.
And then ask?
Then I can ask for?
For fellow comments.
Thank you. Thank you for walking me through that. This is my first public hearing. Council members have anything else?
Just going through the emails and back and forth, just like you stated, this process is taking way too long. I played tag with Julie, trying to catch up with her to hear her concerns. And just from the general public of talking to other handful of people, it's getting really kind of confusing on how things are moving forward or being handled. And that's, that's where we're at now, is trying to figure out, like you're stating with Tammy here of, who can we go to now to get a clarification on what's happening? And a better timeline of when this is gonna happen?
Do you have anything?
No, no, not above that.
Tammy, can you see about getting us some other names that would be affiliated with this?
Can you be more specific, like?
Who manages all of the, the funding? Like, is there somebody at the state level?
On the grant funding side?
Right.
I mean, yes, there are people at AIDA that you could speak to, the project manager, or the, I don't know if talking to the environmental person would be helpful or not.
No, if you're saying Iowa Economic Development, you're saying you can call them?
I'm at Economic Development Authority, yeah, the project manager there. I, I'm just, to me, this is not a grant funding issue, so I don't know how helpful that would be. But of course, you're always welcome to reach out. I know Mitch had contacted Sarah already. She is my project manager at AIDA.
Okay. That's my bad. I didn't know Mitch has already called her. He's so efficient.
Yeah. Yes, he has been in touch with her already, and she had responded to him. But yet, this, I, you know, I'm as frustrated as, I don't wanna say I'm as frustrated as you, because obviously, that's probably not the case. But I am waiting on the information from the engineer as well. So I do understand the frustration from that.
Do you call them, Tammy?
I don't know how to get them, to get it to us quicker.
Yeah. I'm just, Tammy, do you call them? I'm just wondering who all they're getting calls from.
I do not have any contact with them.
We'll open it up for public mint.
Who's the engineer?
KPE.
Okay, just so I'm making proper notes here.
Yeah, KPE is who we're waiting on.
I didn't come here for the, for the public portion of this meeting, but I'm Mark Moss, by the way, over there.
Yeah, can you come up to the podium? And then Tammy, I wanna make sure you can hear as well.
I didn't come here for the public hearing. But what I know, I've been involved in this regarding fourteen North Walnut, I don't think KPE is the problem here. I think Cornerstone is the problem. Because this problem, these buildings have been recognized long before KPE got called. And Cornerstone wouldn't come and deal with it. So your, the answer to your question of who's talking to KPE, that is Goko with Curtis.
Jacob.
Yeah, Jacob. And I think he's doing a pretty good job on all this, through this whole process. But, you know, the engineering takes time. You just can't get an engineer out there and get a report back in date. But from the beginning of this problem, Cornerstone's been the one that's been delaying. Actually, from the beginning of this project, Cornerstone's been the one that's been delaying it from Curtis to get go. So they haven't been showing up. And Curtis has not forced him or gotten him to show up when they were supposed to. So that's what I got to say about all that.
Okay.
I don't think fourteen North Walnut would be the condition it's in today if Cornerstone and Curtis would've got on that quicker. So, and I'm drug into it because fourteen North Walnut's failing into my building, sixteen North Walnut, and I'm drug into it because of that.
Thanks for coming, Mark.
I didn't come here to say anything for the public either, but I feel like I probably should. I don't even know what to say. I mean, I own fourteen North Walnut. We have five businesses in there. So when they shut it down, originally, they gave us enough to vacate it. And now we can't use the front at all, which we're also attached to on the other side, twelve North Walnut. That's how they access where their tenants live. So we, we are the access point, that building's the access point for the other side, too. So it's affecting his side and Lonnie's side. And like I said, we have five businesses just in that building alone. And originally, this project wasn't supposed to affect any of the building, or any of the tenants that we have in there. Yeah, and I've, I've been, like, contacting everybody I know since April. I actually was contacted when we were out of town in February. That's when they decided, that's when they started pulling off, the end of February is when, I believe, they started pulling off the wood siding from, from our building. And that's when the mason said, hey, there's a problem here. And I know I got contacted, I went and looked today, actually, I'm gonna file one. March third is when Jacob contacted me about hiring, hiring KPE. And I asked him, I asked him then to get different bids from other engineers, and that is what he did. But they couldn't do it for an extended period of time. KPE could do it the fastest. And I believe they actually got out there originally in April, according to my notes. So April was the first time KPE went out there. And then nothing's happened since. I mean, we sent KPE back out two more times, I think. And I don't know where all that is, if it's, I do have an issue with Cornerstone myself. So Cornerstone doesn't do anything with that information. Then I don't know if time passes and it just gets worse, and then Cornerstone has to go back out, or KPE goes back out, and it just keeps getting worse. All I know now is the front of my building's gonna fall off, and it needs to be pushed back up. Even when we get the emergency, I think they do have the emergency drawings just for the shoring. But then we get, what was it, like a twenty-eight thousand dollar bill for that? And it's kind of vague as to why that would cost that much, because he would've had to have paid half of that. And the program would, however that's divided, would pay half. And that seemed excessive. So I don't know if it was like a low bid thing, and this is how we get more money out of us. I don't know. I just feel like Cornerstone hasn't done what it's supposed to do. And we're stuck. We're just kind of stuck in this program. We don't have a, we don't really have a say. Mark at least has a say. He can say no to some things, because he's not in, in the Downtown Revitalization Program for his building. So, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions for me? Because I, I probably contact, I contact Jacob almost daily. The poor, the poor guy's sick of me, but he takes me well. I let him have the weekends off, but otherwise, and literally, I talk to him at five thirty today. And again, at six thirty, I mean, so I am contacting them every day. And I ask the same questions, and he is just, he's, he's waiting for the big report from KPE. And I imagine that does take time. But I do know they have a shoring report, report. And that's all I know so far. But do you guys have any questions for me of how this went, or what, what I'm gonna do on the day? I'll forget. I don't know what else to do. I've already thought about contacting senators. I don't know who's gonna get anybody out here to get a mason to bring up my building. I do know, just for an example of how this project works, is, you know, you have a problem with air conditioning, right? So you come here and get it approved. We actually had a problem with air conditioning in our building last summer, when it was ninety degrees. And I was just told to go buy window air conditioners. If you've been in that building, if somebody wants to tell me where you're gonna put a window air conditioner, I would love to know. And so they made me spend money to put a Band-Aid on something that our, our people knew that it was gonna die. So fast forward six months, and in the winter, it did totally die in the middle of winter. So then we had to replace everything in the middle of winter. So it's affected my tenants, like, in the summer. We didn't have air conditioning for, like, I don't know, two, three weeks during the hot time, just because we were trying to go back and forth, making this, having this emergency that they didn't feel was an emergency. And then it was an emergency in the middle of winter. And we finally could do it and replace it at a higher cost and all that. So this has just cost me, besides this downtown revitalization project, this just cost us even more, just because of bureaucracy and everybody you have to deal with to get approval. And that had nothing to do with the facade. That was just to replace our HVAC, which usually is a good thing when landlords want to do something with their, their buildings to help their tenants and make it comfortable. But we weren't allowed to do that initially. So that's, that's how this whole project's been working.
Thank you, Mark and Julie, for both.
You're welcome.
There are no other comments. I'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-seven.
Motion to close lines. Kate's second.
Lines?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
Sunders?
Yes. And council, so what do you do?
Yeah, I am still on the phone. I was going to ask if you needed me for the next agenda item, updating the admin plan, or if you had any questions on that before I left.
Yeah, if you're willing to stay on, because if something comes up, or you can weigh in on.
We can skip to that one.
You wanna skip to twelve C?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm having to pull everything up on my phone, because my other thing isn't working. So I just wanna get it in. So, yeah, if you want to, sorry, Tammy, I'm trying to get it pulled up here. If you wanna just give us a quick overview of the administrative plan, if you don't mind.
Sure. So this is just a required document on who the responsible entity is at the city. Uh, the responsible entity is at the city for the CDVG. And it had Amber's name on there. So we needed to switch it to Mitch's name now that he is the city administrator. That was something we had not done when he first started. But we didn't need to get that updated. So that is the only change to this document. It just outlines whose responsibility things are during the project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that is the only change.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved line. Kate's second.
Kate's?
Yes.
Siders?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
And I think that's probably, pay application three. Who is that one for?
That is for Cornerstone, I believe.
Yeah. And so there.
For Cornerstone, for work that they've done, reviewed by the architect and then submitted to us.
And it does show the retainage, right? That's what I'm looking at, $17,312 is being held back. Am I looking at that correctly? Yeah. So what, if any, I mean, we can't not pay it, right? Even if we know they're part of the problem?
Yeah.
And you can't change how much you hold back, I'm assuming? You're just kind of stuck?
This is for work already done and completed?
Yep. Approved by the review and approved by the architect.
By the architect, so we're. I have a motion to approve pay application number three.
So moved Kate's second.
Lines?
Yes.
Siders?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
We're in reverse order on the way.
Yeah, we're going all the way up to the top now. Although I don't have, was it in the packet separate?
Um, so we can table this one because we weren't able to get it.
Oh, that's right.
Trying to get it.
The change order for 14?
They didn't, yeah, I saw the email. He wasn't gonna get it in time, right?
Yep, so we might have to call.
A special meeting?
A special meeting once he gets it, so.
Can I get a motion to table the change order for 14 North Walnut?
So moved Kate's second line.
Siders?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
Mitch, do you wanna take 13?
Yeah, the 13 is just a pass-through funding for a CDVG grant. This one is the Harbor Hills, which is mostly complete at this point, but just pass-through funds. We'll pay this once we get the money in our account from the state.
So moved lines. Kate's second.
Siders?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
Mayor's report, although I am not the actual mayor. I will just say, so I did attend Cultivate Community. Angie, I took over the shift from Angie and we sat with the flyers regarding the lost funds and that that's gonna be on the ballot. I thought it was gonna be a great idea to get up and walk around because we just weren't, there was not a lot of discussion, people. It was what you would imagine it to be. They either just were oblivious, didn't care, or whatever. So I got up and I tried to go out and, and meet the public and hand some out and I handed out four. So I just think we still need to do whatever we need to do to get the word out on that and what it's going to include and that it's not a new tax. But I'll, I will mention that. Tammy, I still hear you. If you're wanting to drop off, go ahead.
Okay, just making sure you didn't need me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
That's, that's all I have. Angie did not send me anything. So if there was anything else to report, I'm unaware. Anything from either of you?
No.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.